Good evening. I now call the September 1, 2021 meeting of the Hampton School Board to order. Ms. Bowles, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Lafanja?
Here.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Here.
Mr. Kilgore?
Here.
Dr. Mason?
Here.
Mr. Samuels?
Present.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Here.
Ms. Cherry?
Here. Please let the record reflect that all school board members are in attendance as well as our student representative, student representative, Ms. Tamea Kelly. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
To the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item of business is 1.03, Adoption of the Agenda. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we adopt the agenda.
Second.
It has been moved by Dr. Mason and seconded by Dr. Woodhouse that we approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion from board members? Here in number, Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Lafanja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. The next item will be recognitions, but before we get to that, if I could just ask everyone in the audience to please join us in a moment of silence for the 13 servicemen who gave their ultimate sacrifice. Thank you. Recognizations will be handled tonight by our Executive Director for Marketing and Public Relations, Ms. Kelly Gore. She will be joined by Board Member, Mr. Jason Samuels.
Thank you Chairwoman Cherry, Vice Chair Mason, members of the school board Superintendent Smith, and members of the Hampton School's family. Before Mr. Samuel steps to the microphone to assist with tonight's recognitions, I'd like to draw everyone's attention to the screen. Typically, our September meeting falls on the Wednesday after our students return to school, which allows us to spotlight the first day of school. With this board meeting falling on the Wednesday before school starts, we wanted to still provide some welcoming messages this evening.
Welcome back. We wish you, we are HCS.
Have a great school year and a great first day.
Welcome back, Marius.
We're so excited to see you.
Welcome back, Seehawes.
Welcome back. We wish you, we are HCS.
Have a great school year and a great first day.
Welcome back, Marius.
We're so excited to see you.
Welcome back, Seehawes.
Welcome back, Mary Jackson Rockets.
Just a small snippet with just a few welcome backs from our schools. We have more to come. As you can see, our staff members are excited to welcome back our students next week, and I encourage everyone to monitor their Facebook pages and Twitter feeds on Monday evening for a special video that we will be posting to welcome all of our students and families back to school. And we will be at several of our schools the first day capturing the excitement through video and photos, and we'll be posting that throughout the week, next week. So at this time, would Mr. Samuels proceed to the microphone for tonight's recognitions? Thank you, sir. All right. So our first recognition tonight is one of our Bethel Bruin Class of 2021 graduates, Janelle Saunders. Janelle, would you please join me up front by the podium? We're getting, we're not sure that she arrived. Okay.
Okay.
What we can do is hold that recognition till after our teacher leaders. If she arrives, we'll recognize her, and if not, we will still recognize her on TV because it's a great state accomplishment. So we'll go ahead and move on to our teacher leaders. We are going to be very flexible this evening. Okay, so now we're moving on to our next recognition. And this evening, we are honored to be recognizing a special group of HCS educators who have completed our two-year Teacher Leadership Professional Learning Series. This series, designed and facilitated by Dr. Kim Richardson and Heather Peterson, provides over 50 hours of both face-to-face, virtual, live, and independent study activities in four major areas of leadership, communication, collaboration, and professional learning. These teachers have successfully completed all of their coursework for the following courses: The Why, Who, How, What of Teacher Leadership; Leading with Influence and the Brain and Mind; Leading Through Change: Personal Leadership and Effective Communication; Strategies for Failure to Communicate: Group and Team Dynamics; Relational Trust; Adult Learning and Motivation: Dealing with Adults; and Understanding Professional Learning. Out of the 58 graduates, and yes, I said 58 graduates this year, 18, that gives some applause, that's awesome. So out of our 58 HCS graduates, 18 of them are veteran educators who wanted to expand their impact outside of their classroom and participate in professional learning that would help them to do so. Let's give 18 teachers, our veterans, educators. And 40 of our educators completed the series as the conclusion of their five-year induction process. Woo-hoo, come on. So the 40 individuals who completed the series as part of that five-year induction process, they started their professional journey with us in the 16, 17 school year. And Dr. Kim Richardson, when this is when Dr. Kim Richardson first introduced our amazing model designed to support our strategic plan goal of retaining exceptional staff, and they truly are exceptional. This is very significant as these educators are the first graduating class of that five-year induction process. That's beautiful. So even though school has not officially started, they still dressed up and they came out tonight. So it is very exciting. It is very exciting that we have so many amazing teacher leaders with us this evening. And in order to recognize everyone, and in order to keep safe, I'm going to invite individuals up to the podium in groups. When I call your name, if you could just please join me on either side of the podium in no particular order, and you'll stay up here with me until Mr. Samuels will call you up one at a time to receive your graduation certificates. And Dr. Richardson is going to join him onstage to assist with that.
Come on, Ms. Peterson.
Oh, and Ms. Peterson.
Yes.
All right, are we ready? Here we go. Our first group, if you could join me up front by the podium facing the school board. We have Lauren Barad from Bridgeport Academy, Latisha Boyce from Kilgore Gifted Center, Joshe Bryant from Craft Elementary, Michelle Bryant from Andrews Pre-K through 8, Erica Butler from Phillips Elementary, Gretchen Carey from Kilgore Gifted Center, Catherine Chafont from Asbury Elementary. Rebecca Clancy from Mary S. Peak Elementary, Emily Coleman from Mary S. Peak Elementary, Agada Corbana from Phoebus High, Michelle Credle from Jones Magnet Middle, Angela Dandridge from Phillips Elementary, Brittany Day from Kickatan High, Melissa Dickerson from Mary T. Christian Elementary, Natasha Evans from Phillips Elementary, Matt Freakley from Sims Middle, Bonnie Gallagher from Asbury Elementary, Sharnita Gordon from Moton Early Childhood Center, Evan Grummel from Kickatan High. Please join me up front. So this is our first group, not necessarily in any particular, well, alphabetical order, but they could be either our veteran teachers or those that just completed the five-year process. So let's give them a round of applause before Mr. Samuel pulls them up to present their certificates. And I'm going to go ahead and turn that over to Mr. Samuel.
So you're ready, Ms. Peterson and Dr. Richardson?
We're getting there, we're getting there.
So on behalf of our Chair, Ms. Cherry, and Vice Chair, Dr. Mason, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Jeffrey Smith, I am honored to present each of our graduates a framed certificate from Hampton City Schools. And each certificate reads, and I'm not going to call as each person, I'm just going to read it one time, and then I'll call you.
You don't want to read that certificate 50 times, sir.
Because I don't want to prolong this meeting because we're expecting some thunderstorms, so I just want to make sure that we get out of here. Certificate of Achievement, this certificate is proudly presented to and the person, Ms. Bryant, for successfully completion of Hampton City School Teacher Leadership, September 1, 2021, and it has Dr. Kim Richardson's signature. So Ms. Bryant?
There are two.
Josiah Bryant?
Deja.
Josiah Bryant, my apology.
Deja Bryant.
Deja Bryant.
From Craft Elementary.
Erica Butler? Michelle Credo? Rebecca Cowell? Bonnie Gallagher? Melissa Dickerson? Sharita Gordon? Sharnita?
Thank you.
Sharnita.
All right. Our next group, as our teacher leaders are having a seat, we're going to go ahead and call up our next group of teacher leaders. So when I call your name, please join me on either side of the podium. It does not matter what order you line up. We have Deborah Hall from Phoebus High, Dion Hamilton from Forest Elementary, Tara Harris from Andrews Pre-K through 8, Ray Sheen Harold from Mary W. Jackson Fundamental, Natasha Hill from Bethel High, Andrea Hogg from Lindsay Middle, Madeline Kenry from Phoenix Pre-K through 8, Rachel Key from Mary T. Christian Elementary, Elizabeth Leach from Bryan Elementary, Valerie Link from Aberdeen Elementary, Nicole Byer Noday from Cooper Elementary, Wanda Mitchell from Hampton High, Lynette Mouton from Armstrong School for the Arts, Sarah Nagel from Mary T. Christian Elementary, William O'Neil from Phoebus High, Erin Nelson from Lindsay Middle, Doris Organe from Innovation and Professional Learning Department, Karen Parker from Eaton Middle School. This is our next group of teacher leaders. Let's give them a big round of applause.
And once again, on behalf of our Chair, Ms. Cherry, Vice Chair, Dr. Mason, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Jeffrey Smith, I am honored to present each of you, our graduates, a framed certificate from Hampton City Schools. And I'm going to read it to you once again, what it says. Certificate of Achievement, this certificate is proudly presented to for successful completion of Hampton City School Teacher Leadership, September 1, 2021, Dr. Kim Richardson, Ms. Deborah Hall. Dr. Hill. Rachel Key. Key. Miss Rachel Key. Nicole Byer Noday. I got that one. Sarah Noggle. And Ms. Wanda Mitchell. And Ms. Karen Parker.
All right. We have a final group of teacher leaders. So when I call your name, if you would please join me again at the podium. I have Shawna Payne from Mary T. Christian Elementary, Jessica Penn from Cooper Elementary, Samantha Pine from Phoebus High, Ryan Reynolds from Phoebus High, Amanda Rispoli from Kilgore Gifted Center, William Ritter from Phoenix Pre-K through 8, Krista Rogers from Bethel High, Elizabeth Ross from Mary T. Christian, Kaitlin Rowland from Asbury Elementary, Jasmine Royal from Cooper Elementary, Megan Shank from Barron Elementary, Casey Simpson-Hazy from Langley Elementary, Opal Smalls from Andrews Pre-K through 8, Ginger Spencer from Forest Elementary, Anne Sutton from Kickatan High, Michelle Simzik from Craft Elementary, Jessica Townsend from Forest Elementary, Allison Tucker from Jones Magnet Middle, Ashley Virgin from Phillips Elementary, Candace Wilson from Machin Elementary, Shanae Winder from Phoebus High. And that concludes our third group. Let's give them a big round of applause. I love my right, I don't bite, I promise.
And Ms. Gore, this is our third and final group?
Yes, sir, it is.
On behalf of our Chair, Ms. Cherry, Vice Chair, Dr. Mason, the Hampton School Board, and Superintendent Dr. Jeffrey Smith, I am honored to present each of our graduates a framed certificate from Hampton City Schools. And once again, it reads Certificate of Achievement. This certificate is proudly presented to the person for successfully for successful completion of Hampton City School Teacher Leadership, September 1, 2021, Dr. Kim Richardson. And my first is Jessica Penn. William Ritter. Ms. Jasmine Royal. Casey Simpson. Opel Smalls. Candace Wilson. Allison Tucker. And Michelle Simzik. So let me go ahead and turn back to my page. All righty, so you're back at your seat. So normally, you would be standing here, but because of COVID, we have to have recognized social distance. But I would like to have all of the graduates please stand once again. And all family members, faculty, administrators, please stand to be recognized. All righty, but before Dr. Richardson, and I know Heather Peterson already took her seat. On behalf of the Hampton School Board, we would like to sincerely thank you for your dedication and service to our students, our families, and our staff. The Leadership, Professional Leading Series is an important work. Each of you are completed, each of you completed the series in addition to your job responsibilities, and this was done during COVID. And we really appreciate your commitment to Hampton City Schools. As we say, every child, every day, whatever it takes. Thank you once again.
Mr. Samuels, our other recognition is here. If you would join us again at the. Yes, yes. And before we move on to that one, I would like to reiterate what Mr. Samuel said because, you know, what you all have completed, 50 hours in addition to your normal job responsibilities, your family responsibilities, as well as a worldwide pandemic, is truly amazing, and we thank you for all of your hard work and your dedication because you truly are part of our HCS team. And without you all, we would not be where we are today. So thank you and congratulations. We've got some rock star teachers. That's what I keep telling everybody. All right, well, now we're going to flip to the beginning of the script, Mr. Samuels. And we get to go back, and we are going to recognize Janelle Saunders. If you would go ahead and join me up at the podium. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about Janelle Saunders. She is actually a graduate, so she is no longer a high school student. She is a 2021 graduate of Bethel High School. And she is here tonight because she earned state championships in several, and I say several, and this is not the only year, this past year she won state championships, in track and field events. She accounted for 35 of the 36 points for the Lady Bruins at the VHSL Class 5 State Championship. So to put it into perspective, she won the high jump, jumping 5'4". Now I'm 3 1/2 feet without heels. She jumped my height and higher. The long jump at 19'6", the 100-meter hurdles at 14.18 feet, and placed fourth in the shot put throwing 35 feet 1.5 inches. Let's give her a round of applause. So in addition to these state championships, and I believe we heard from her school that it was, you've won actually 15 state championships. Is that correct in your time at Bethel? Yes, very modest, but yes, 15. Janelle was named the Peninsula Sports Club's Most Valuable Female Player for Track and Field. She competed in the Junior Olympics in Houston, Texas in early August. And she's an honors graduate and attending now Hampton University on a full athletic scholarship. So if you would join us, Mr. Samuel, up on stage?
You know, Ms. Gore, I know sometimes I go off-script. And I'm just, and I'm just thinking about this young lady, your accomplishments. And so in 2026, the Paris Olympics. You're going to be there. You're going to be there. And then beyond. So you're going to challenge the Jamaican ladies. Because you know they took one, two, three, and the 100-meter, and the 200-meters. So you're going to challenge them.
Well, I do jumps.
You do jumps? Okay. But.
That was off-script, no.
That was off-script. But, Janelle, I know you couldn't have done this without, by yourself. Coach, please stand. Coach Gaines?
She's not here.
She's at practice. The Athletic Director? Mr. Saunders? Where's your mom, Janelle? What's her name?
Sharnita Jackson-Davis.
Ms. Jackson-Davis, please stand. Because you couldn't have done this by yourself. And I'm just going to stick to my script right now. Janelle is one of the most talented athletes I've ever worked with, according to Coach Gaines. She has the potential to be a superstar. And in 2026, she will be at the Paris Olympics.
In L.A. after that.
In L.A. after that. The world of track and field has yet to witness her true stardom, and I know one day she will be on the big stage as an Olympian. And hopefully, she will have like triple medals at the 2026 Olympics. So, Janelle, on behalf of our Chair, Ms. Cherry, our Vice Chair, Dr. Woodhouse, and all the members of the, Dr. Mason, my apologies. We were just, we just came from a closed session, Dr. Woodhouse, and I had like some good conversation. And Dr. Mason, the Hampton School Board, and our Superintendent, Dr. Smith, it is my honor, and when I tell you, it is my honor to present you with this certificate. And you know the reason why it's my honor, because I ran track in Brooklyn, New York, Lafayette High School. I think my record is still intact at Lafayette High School, but I need to do some research. And it will stand for a long time. And so, on behalf of the Hampton School Board and the administrative staff at Bethel High School, we would like to present you with a certificate of achievement. And it says, "Congratulations, this certificate is proudly presented to Janelle Saunders." Are you, by the way, related to Principal Saunders?
I wish.
You wish?
I wish.
Awesome. Bethel High School, VHS Class 5 State Champion in the high jump, the long jump, and the 100-meter hurdles. Congratulations.
Well, Mr. Samuels, you were very excited about our recognitions this evening.
Extremely. And, you know, if the crowd pleases me, I will do the Hussein Bolt.
There you go. Again, that was off-script. I love it. Thank you very much. Madam Chair, that does conclude our recognitions for this evening.
Thank you so much, Ms. Gore. I want to, on behalf of the board, say a big shout-out to all of our excellent educators. You guys are the best. You guys are the best. And Janelle, we wish you luck. I think I speak on behalf of the board. When you talk about jumping, I think most of us have to think twice about jumping a puddle. And here you're doing the kinds of things you're doing. And Mr. Samuels, we have to give you kudos because you must have had your Gatorade today because you were really on. So we got to thank you for outstanding, outstanding in terms of recognitions. Thank you again. Now, I know some of you know about the storm coming. I can see some of you moving already. So what we're going to do is just give you a couple of minutes to leave and take whatever pictures you want, and we'll get started in a couple of seconds, okay? and we'll get started in a couple of seconds, okay? Be safe going home. Okay, we'll now move on to our consent agenda, which consists of Item 3.01 Personnel Report Number 2116, 3.02 Minutes of the School Board Meeting of August 18th, 2021, and 3.03 Certification of the Closed Session of August 18, 2021. Is there a motion to take this as a block? Madam Chair?
Second.
It has been properly moved by Ms. Afonja and seconded by Dr. Mason that we take this as a block and approve the consent agenda as presented. Is there any discussion from Board members? Hearing none, Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Ms. Banks Gray?
Aye.
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Afonja?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Now we move to Superintendent and Staff Reports. And for that, I'll turn it over to our Outstanding Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Jeffrey Smith.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Board. We'll start with our first report, and that's One Division and One Transformation for the 21-22 School Year: Professional Learning Opportunities to Ensure a Successful School Opening. Dr. Cagiano, our Deputy Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, will introduce our first presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair Mason, members of the Board. Joining us this evening are three HCS leaders you all are well aware of. These individuals play key roles in really ensuring a successful school start, not only for our teachers, but for our school administrators. Kicking off tonight will be Dr. Kim Richardson. She'll be providing an overview of our new teacher orientation. As the Board as well as aware and as Ms. Goral indicated this evening, it's just one small component of a five-year, really robust, comprehensive teacher induction process. She'll be followed by Ms. Heather Peterson. Ms. Heather Peterson will be providing information in reference to Rejuvenate. It's one of our more popular trainings, professional trainings for teachers. It is her brainchild, and this is the 11th year of that particular conference. Ms. Peterson will be followed by Dr. Kate Maxlow. She'll share some additional information in reference to professional learning opportunities for teachers throughout the school year and this summer. And really with a focus on pre-service, which began on August 25th when our teachers reported back to school. So at this time, turn the presentation over to Dr. Richardson.
Hi, good evening. I'm excited to share. I'm excited to provide an overview of our new teacher orientation conducted from August 16th to August 24th of this year. We did begin with a part of the Rejuvenate Conference, and we call it our New Teacher Track. Historically, what we found were principals were sending teachers to the Rejuvenate Conference. However, because of the rigor of the content, our new teachers tended to get lost. So this is the fourth school year, I believe, that we designed a special track especially for our novice teachers. And we have our teacher leaders and our instructional coaches, they're in that first column, sorry, I forgot the row header, that provide that learning for them. We did have our elementary teachers, face-to-face with social distancing, of course, as they learned how to manage manipulatives, have an overview of the stages of reader, and dive into classroom organization. Our middle school teacher leaders Carrie and Chelsea O'Handlon provided content on Getting to Know You, You Can't Scare Me, I Teach Middle School, and The Realities of Teaching. And our high school coaches provided small shifts and big differences, especially since a number of those teachers are career switchers and/or coming from the collegiate level, mindfulness in the classroom, and making failure harder than passing, and really focusing on formative assessment strategies. So we had a total of 33 teachers participate in that simultaneously while the Rejuvenate Conference was occurring. And then our orientation was presented virtually. However, this year, we had the opportunity to have the teachers gather with social distancing at their schools. So what we lost last year in the opportunity to have the collaborative experience, we gained back while still having the advantage of being able to facilitate virtually. So our days were long, but profitable and productive. We provide a big overview to Hampton City Schools, and Dr. Smith shares his Every Child, Every Day, Whatever It Takes overview of our mission, vision, and core values. I dove into Day Two with being an HCS educator and taking the mission and vision and core values and diving in and making personal connections to their educator identity. Heather picks up on Day Three with Climate and Culture and helping the teachers understand the specific climate and culture of the city of Hampton in our school division, unpacks collaboration strategies, as well as provided an overview of our social-emotional learning plan for the year. And they all left with strategies on how to begin to embed those into their first weeks of school in working with their children. Our curric-, or, excuse me, our brand-new teachers have a full day of classroom management, and we were excited that this year they had an opportunity to walk away in hand with rules, routines, and procedures for their classrooms for the first week of school, along with the routines on how to greet their students and how to provide closure to their lessons. So they left with that on Day Four. We turned things over to the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment Department, where the curriculum leaders and teacher specialists provide the specific access to the curriculum, what teaching this content should look like, and they do have an overview of understanding by design. And on Day Six, we had a hodgepodge of things. The Academies of Hampton introduced all high school teachers to what it means to teach in the academy environment, supporting all learners. This was a new session where our Special Education Department partnered with our English as a, English Language Learners Department to let all educators know what it means to support all learners, because we will all encounter them. And we wanted to make sure that our teachers had access to our communication tool, ParentSquare. So we're very excited about the numbers that we have. We had approximately, on a given day, 150 of our newly hired educators, no matter what their experience level. And what I did not note on this slide was that Special Education also had very targeted sessions for our speech and language pathologists, our inclusion teachers, as well as our self-contained. So everyone was hopefully having their needs met so that they would have in their tool belts what they needed to begin the first day of school. Finally, we provided mentor training, virtually and face-to-face, because we do continue to provide onsite mentors for each new hire that is a novice teacher, meaning they are coming to us with less than three years' experience. And so our sessions were listed there. And again, because of COVID and going into Zoom, we've been able to be very creative with how we offer this professional development. And you can see our attendance numbers there. With our new training model, we're trying to train teachers so that we don't have to wait until we have an opening. But there are people on hand at the school that can be tagged to provide that mentor training. And what I'm really also excited about is that we are going into Year Three of providing district-level mentors. So what does that mean? So let's say you are a new PE teacher at an elementary school. There is not another PE teacher at your building to provide that content-specific support. So while you may have a mentor at your school to help you understand the technology, how we do it here in this school, we have tasked another PE teacher at another building to provide that additional support. So there are many teachers that have more than one mentor, and we have school-level and district-level responsibilities. So I'm very excited about that opportunity as well. Are there any questions? Am I supposed to ask that? Are there any questions? Okay. Oh, I'm so sorry. I'm out of order.
Good evening. It's always a pleasure to be here to talk about the work of Climate and Culture in this summer's work. Our big focus area, as you all know, with Climate and Culture is social-emotional learning. And so this summer, we wanted to continue to provide those learning opportunities. We kept those in a virtual space, but we offered three specific sessions. One was all about creating belonging and engagement. That is the focus this year when we talk about 21-22 School Year for Climate and Culture. You'll hear Kate talk about we did 20 sessions with our staff, and our focus for Climate and Culture is really about how are we going to foster that? And not just for our students, but for our staff. We're in a space where we're all trying to reattach ourselves or build back better. And so being able to do that through the lens of social-emotional, social-emotional learning was really important. So that first session was all about putting strategies into our teachers' hands. The second one is what is your cell's superpower? What research shows time and time again from divisions that have been implementing this work is if they had to do it all over again, they would have started with the adults first. And they would have spent a couple of years with the adults before implementing it with young people. So that session was specifically for adults to be very selfish for an hour and a half with me and focus on what is their superpower. But we also explored every superhero faces villains, or what does Superman face? Kryptonite. And so our kryptonite is all about what our triggers are. And so having them delve into, when they're in the spaces of supporting young people, what triggers them? So then they could create routines, procedures, structures, and have their own self-management tools as well. And then the third one was a very personal one for me that I was super excited about. Are you a joy rebel? And so that was all about how can we as educators spread more joy, more hope, and more optimism? And really thinking about how can we get better about providing service learning for our young folks? I know that's a big push at the high school level, but starting as early as kindergarten, young people can be involved in service learning. So I'm excited to say we had 227 staff that participated. It was completely, again, voluntary, and we offered multiple sessions of both of them, of all three of them. So that was what our summer looked like for social-emotional learning, in addition to what we did during pre-service. And then rejuvenate, as Dr. Cagiano mentioned, this is our 11th year. Typically, it's a face-to-face situation, but of course, we had to pivot. So last year, our 10th year, we came up with the Rejuvenate-to-go idea. And so carrying it forth this year, we weren't sure for a long time what was going to be happening, so we just went ahead and said, "Let's make it virtual." The beauty of making it virtual is that we can have live virtual sessions, but we also offer an on-demand component. So just like Netflix, you can stream almost the sessions after the fact because so many people vacation or they can't be here. There were a couple of people who joined us. I'm like, "Are you a Mag's Head?" Because you could see their squares, but it was fantastic. So we had over 22 different sessions that focused specifically on social-emotional learning. That is what we're all about with this conference now. And you can see the four components. Sell-in Action was all about providing sessions where folks could walk away with strategies they could use in the classroom. Sell as a lever for equity, really talking about how if both adults and young people have command over their social-emotional skills, then it does indeed strengthen the work of equity in our division. Social-emotional learning for mental health and well-being. We had some of our social workers and some of our school psychologists, as well as some teachers who presented in that area. And that was a very well-attended group of sessions as well. And then also, how do we equip our leaders to not only push the work of SELL, but to be able to model it as well? So again, now we have those recorded sessions available. So we had 286 folks register. On the live virtual event, we had about 120 folks, and then continually seeing where people are pushing those on-demand sessions as well. So this is what that looks like now. When you go to the Rejuvenate site, you can access those, and it pulls it up. And you'll see you can click on the recording link and then also have access to the materials. I'll turn it over to Dr. Maxlow.
Thank you so much. I'm going to be talking a little bit about some of the other professional development that we offered during the summer and then about our pre-service time. So as we usually do, we advertised all of our professional learning to our teachers using our Summer Learning Playbook, which is a website that we create every year. And it's kind of small to see, but across the top, you can see that it's actually organized by grade level and for secondary by content area. That's so that each teacher has a list right for them that they can see exactly what is being offered, so they don't have to go searching through a whole bunch of things that are not appropriate for them. So here's an example, for instance, of what the fifth grade page looked like. And you can see we had some from the Science Department, but we also had lots of other things, such as from the Innovation and Professional Learning Department, Climate and Culture, Organizational Development, in addition to the content areas. One of the things that we did this year as an Innovation and Professional Learning Department that was very different was we held something called an UN-Conference. In an UN-Conference, instead of people coming and being presented to, we instead have people come and we have an important educational question. And then they actually learn from each other by talking with each other. And we have facilitators, but they're not there to teach. They're there to ask people questions and get that conversation moving. So some of our examples were, for instance, what does it mean to have a culturally relevant, culturally responsive classroom? When does it make sense to use technology? And when does it make sense to use more traditional methods? So super-important questions that are very relevant for our current year, for our current time. And we also had not only people from Innovation and Professional Learning to facilitate the conversations, we had several members from our HCS Leadership Cohort going through their Leadership Admin Program at ODU. So they got to facilitate some of those conversations. And then several of our curriculum leaders did as well. So Dr. Angela Bird-Wright, our Division Equity Leader, she was the one who was facilitating those conversations around cultural responsive teaching. Kelly D., Chuck Baumgartner, all came as well to help facilitate these conversations. And we had some amazing feedback from teachers saying that it was unlike anything that they had ever done before. It's based loosely on the idea of an ed camp, if you're familiar with those, except that it was all online, so they could come in and come out of sessions as they wanted to. And so they said that just getting those perspectives from all different teachers, because they weren't sorted by grade level or by content area. So you might have had a kindergarten teacher in there with a calculus teacher, but all giving their perspectives on these very important topics. And so they, the feedback was good. In fact, some people asked if we could keep doing it throughout the course of the year. And so that's something that we're going to be looking at again. And just more of the feedback from our teachers about how very different of a conference it was. Then you also heard Heather talk about our pre-service training. We've started doing our Understanding by Design modules again. We did not do those very much during the past school year. We focused more on virtual learning. And I'm very excited because when we first started them, they were on Curriculum Instruction and Assessment, just the understanding by design part. And then we folded in Climate and Culture, and so we could show the connection between those things. And this year, we have also put in Equity and Culturally Responsive Teaching. So it was a three, three parts there. So Ms. Peterson was presenting, Dr. Bird-Wright was presenting, either myself or somebody from my department was presenting on the Climate and, no, we were presenting on the Curriculum Instruction and Assessment and the Balanced Assessments piece. And so all teachers in every single school go through that training. It was an hour and 15 minutes, but that way they're, we're having a common language of what is equity in Hampton City Schools? What do we mean by social-emotional learning? And then how does all of that fit into this idea of balanced assessments, performance assessments, not just multiple choice, et cetera? So that we can have conversations across the entire division and all be defining these things in the same way. And then our CIA team members did all of their content area trainings like they usually do on August 30th. That was for our elementary, from 8:30 to around 11:30. On the 31st was middle school, and then on September the 1st was high school. And so that's where they bring the teachers in and they go through any curricular changes, any changes to standards, instructional models, et cetera. And then what we just finished up was an Academy Interdisciplinary Teaching Training. We actually have partnered with the American Alliance for Innovative Systems. They're a group of consultants who were started by some people from the Nashville Public Schools. And so they come in and they talk through how teachers can work together across their academy teams to teach through that interdisciplinary lens in a way that still makes sense for their content area, for their curriculum, et cetera. And so we had wonderful feedback from teachers as well that, oh, interdisciplinary learning is making sense, and I can't wait to try this out. So there will be more follow-ups on that throughout the year as well. And then just to show some of the example feedback, this was some of the best feedback we have ever had from our UBD modules that we do. I said K through 12 earlier, I meant pre-K through 12. Everybody gets to come to these. And you can see the teachers talking about how this is the work that I think in many ways they've been waiting for, and they see the relevance of it and how important it is, this idea of everyone being on the same page, that we can't have one school defining equity in one way and another school defining it in another way. Everybody has to be singing from the same sheet of music in order to truly have that one division, one transformation. And I loved that last one. Fired me up to promote even more equity. And we had so many teachers leave the PD saying that they were really, really ready and now excited for the school year. And that is it. And so, questions?
Okay, thank you. Excellent report, as expected. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions from board members?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Ms. Tina Banks-Grey.
Don't have any questions. Thank you, ma'am. Don't have any questions, but can I just take the time just to give you guys applause and accolades for creating such an innovative and outstanding series in professional learning opportunities for Hampton City Schools? You guys never cut any corners, and you always produce cutting-edge programs. And I just want to give you guys your accolades here and let you know that I appreciate the work that you do. Thank you so much. An awesome presentation.
Great comments. Great comments, Ms. Banks-Grey. Any other comments from board members? Okay. Thank you again for being there for Hampton City Schools. You're the best.
Thank you.
And you know, somehow, I knew that joy would be the one that you preferred. And let me tell you what it reminded me of. It reminded me of an old, well, they're all old now, Andy Griffith episode, where he was telling, you like that too? Dr. Smith said he likes it too, so I'm not too old. Where Andy was explaining to Opie the value of always being happy and the value of joy. And he said, "Now, Op, for instance, take joy and just spell it backwards. What do you have?" So, he put it back, and it was like, "Wow, Jeez." He said, "I don't see nothing, Paul." He said, "That's right, because you have nothing without joy." So, I agree with that piece. Thank you again.
Nothing without joy.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Outstanding. We'll move to the next, then. Our Business Operations, and that's Ms. Dorch for the financial report.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Cherry, Vice Chair Mason, School Board Members, Dr. Smith, and the Hampton community. It's my pleasure to present the June 2021, which is the end of the fiscal year monthly board report. At the end of June, our revenues totaled 22, 200, excuse me, $226.7 million, and that was 16% higher when compared to the previous fiscal year. That increase is due to additional state funding for programs such as basic aid. We also received no-loss funding and a state learning loss supplement. And additionally, the local contribution, as budgeted and approved by the local governing body, was $1.3 million more than the fiscal year 2020 local contribution. Our expenditures and encumbrances, they totaled $232 million, and this was 10.3% higher than the previous fiscal year. You'll find in the June report that there's an additional schedule that discusses our carryforward funds for fiscal year 2021, along with the draft resolution the City Council requesting the reappropriation of unspent state funds into fiscal year 2022. Pending the recommendation for approval from City Council, if that is approved, we will then utilize those funds first to make sure that they go back to specific state programs, such as the state learning loss and our SOL algebra readiness programs. But then, the remaining carryforward funds will be utilized to offset any revenue reductions in fiscal year 2022. If those do not materialize, then we would reuse those funds for one-time instructional and operational expenses. You also have included in your report transfers to and from the technology classification for June 2021. And because this is the end of the fiscal year for us, we are going through our financial reporting and external audit process, which actually started last week. Therefore, if there are any changes to the June figures, we will communicate those to the school board. And that concludes the report for tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Dorch. Are there any questions from board members from Ms. Dorch? If you have any question, Ms. Kelly? Tamia? Okay. Thank you again.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Ms. Ruth will now provide a staffing update.
Good evening. Got some good news. Our numbers continue to go down. Staffing percentage continues to go up. We are now 98.8% staffed. We have 18.5 classroom vacancies. Again, they are still pretty evenly split. There are eight elementary vacancies, 10.5 secondary. I have three pending offers at the secondary level, so just waiting to hear on those. And then, we have, it's depending on whose praxis scores have come in, we've got four to six candidates, or actually, they're not even candidates. We have hired them as long-term subs, and we are just waiting for their praxis results to come in. And, you know, assuming, I'm claiming that they are all going to pass their praxis, and we will hire them as full-time teachers once we get those scores. So, we're looking good. We will not be 100% staffed on September 7th, but we do have every classroom covered. So, and in terms of food service, we still have 35 vacancies, but Ms. Forrest has a plan to make sure that, you know, lunches are being, and breakfasts are going out the door at every school. She is thinking that she'll have those positions filled by probably the second to third week of school, based on the folks that are currently going through her hiring pipeline. And then, for transportation, we're still at 39 vacancies. The 19 trainees that I talked about last time are still going through their class. It's a, and it's a good thing. It's a extensive process to get your CDL license, and so, they're still in training. But so far, they're all doing well, and we anticipate they will all be on board with us just as soon as they complete the class. Any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Ruth. Any questions from board members? I see you, Mrs. Samuels.
I am just going to look to Dr. Smith if we could have Mr. Wills hopefully at our next board meeting just to talk through what's the, you know, that, because that's a kind of high number, 39, you know? So, he can come and talk to us to what does that look like, that training looks like and so forth? Because we haven't had Mr. Wills here in a few months, if that's appropriate.
Sure. Although, I can tell you that 39 is not a high number. Some neighboring school divisions have over 100 bus driver vacancies. I read, not a, not an immediate neighbor, but read from a Virginia school division just Monday, I believe, they are actually asking parents to drive their children to school because they're 100-plus bus drivers short.
And, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. No.
And I know Dr., not Dr., I know Mr. Wills has a great plan in place, but with those 39 vacancy, on September 7th, will he have enough staff on?
Yes, sir.
On the road to make sure that we have kids back and forth to school?
All routes are currently covered.
Okay.
Where, why we need those additional 39, because some people would say, "Well, if routes are all covered, why do you need 39 more bus drivers?" And that's to make sure that we're covered in case an employee goes out on family medical leave, or somebody wins the lottery, and we have a vacancy. So, yes, that's why. But 100% of the routes are covered, just like 100% of our students are going to be fed. Both Mr. Wills and Ms. Forrest have great plans in place, but we are going to continue to staff so that they can work at more optimal levels.
So, our parents needs to rest assured that come September the 7th at 6:30, 6:45 a.m. in the morning, their child, our children, will be picked up and transported to Hampton City Schools.
Absolutely.
All right.
And I've received a call from Mr. Wills earlier today, and he said, "I just want to pass on some good news on a Wednesday." I said, "I'll take it any day." And he said, "I want to share with you that we certainly look forward to all of the routes covered on the first day of school." And he said, "So, I just want to reassure you that we are prepared for the opening of school." So, all things moving in that direction. We anticipate that those buses on, the wheels on the bus will go round and round.
We are all excited and ready for our students to be back on. Thank you.
Any more questions for Ms. Ruth before she leaves? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ruth.
Madam Chair, members of the board, that concludes superintendent and staff reports. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Now, moving on to item five, hearing of any delegations or presentation of any written communications or petitions. Ms. Bowles, I've received one, so would you please read the protocol?
Yes. Citizens are invited to address the School Board on matters of public concern about the school division. Speaker forms are available prior to the start of the meeting. If you wish to address the School Board, please complete the form and give it to the clerk. Each individual will have five minutes to speak. All comments shall be directed to the School Board. Speakers may not yield their time to another. Speakers should address the School Board with decorum on policy issues. Speakers comment on individuals at their own risk of violating confidentiality laws and are defaming the subjects of their comments. Neither the School Board, the superintendent, nor the school administration will respond publicly to any comments by speakers about individuals. Presentation of resolutions, declarations, proclamations, manifestos, awards, or other similar documents not originated under the auspices of the School Board or administration is prohibited during the public comment period. The audience is asked to be respectful of all speakers. Public comment is the School Board's opportunity to listen to the speaker. Since our purpose is to hear from you, the Board will not engage in dialogue with the audience or whomever is at the podium. Matters requiring a response will be directed to the Superintendent for research and response. The Superintendent may report back on such matters at a subsequent business meeting session as appropriate. The School Board carefully considers your comments as we decide matters that are brought before us. We appreciate your attendance and your input.
Thank you, Ms. Bowles. Our speaker is Alana Brahm. Yes, it's right there.
Good evening. Nice to see you all again.
Good evening.
Yes, I just had a few questions in regards to the student-parent guardian expectations and agreement. After reading it over, I read it over a few times, actually, and I just had questions in regards to some of the, some of the requests that were made on here in regards to parent visitation. It states online, well, bullet point, rather. I had it under here. It was saying as parent, okay, bas, related to his or her illness. I'm sorry, I had it. Well, I'm just going to paraphrase. Basically, it was stating that you, that as parents, we would have, we were not allowed to come up to the school for, with our children for breakfast, lunch, or dinner. I mean, breakfast, lunch, or any kind of snack, that that was prohibited. And it also said that lunch would be provided. I also, I had a question as in regards to, are we as parents allowed to send our, allowed to have our children bring their lunches to school? And I also had a question in regards to wearing the mask all day long. Are they going to be required to wear the mask when they're outside during recess? Is that going to be required? Also, inside of the classrooms, I was reading on the, according to the COVID-19, on the COVID-19 symptom page, it was saying that children are required at all times to be three feet apart. And knowing that the way that children learn, it's a, it's very healthy, it's a healthy engage, it's healthy for them to engage with one another. So, I'm just trying to see how is that going to be going into the school year if they're going to have to be three feet apart and not having any kind of contact whatsoever? And as far as the, my next question was in regards to the COVID test, having to do with a COVID test every day. The, as the parent guardian, I would keep my child home if any COVID, okay, I understand that one. My COVID, my child has any COVID-like symptoms or diagnosis, that we were required daily to do the COVID, the COVID form? I was just, I just had some questions about that. And also, at my last question, rather, it was in regards to whether or not it was saying that a child would be reprimanded and failure, failure to comply with the guidelines listed on this form, as well as the HCS 2021, 2022 Health Mitigation Statement. Document may result in my child being placed in an alternative learning environment or receiving a discipline consequence. So, I just had some questions in regards to that. And legally, where can I find all of this information that is implemented and how it would be?
Okay. Thank you very much. The superintendent has asked me to direct you to our website, but you can talk to Ms. Gore right there, and she can show you what most of that information is, okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Did you receive any more, Ms. Bowles?
I did not.
Okay. Moving right along to deliberation, item number six, which consists of 6.01, Revision of School Board Policy BDD, Electronic Participation in Meetings from Remote Locations; 6.02, Revision of School Board Policy GBA/CCA, Prohibition of Abuse in the Workplace; 6.03, Revision of School Board Policy GCBBC, Overtime; 6.04, Deletion of School Board Policy GBBC-R, Overtime/Compensatory Time Guidelines; 6.05, Revision of School Board Policy GCBF, Holiday Compensation; 6.06, Revision of School Board Policy GCBE, Holidays; 6.07, New School Board Policy GCQB, External Consulting Activities; 6.08, Revision of School Board Policy IGAG, Teaching About Drugs, Alcohol, and Tobacco; 6.09, Revision of School Board Policy JHCD, Administering Medicines to Students. Ms. Reeves, I believe you have the first ones, followed by Ms. Ruth, then Dr. Cagiano rounding out with Ms. Thatcher. Yes, ma'am. Any questions from board members? Okay. Moving on to 6.02, you want to just stand, Ms. Ruth, in case they do have some? Between 6.02 to 6.07. Any questions from board members? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Ruth. 6.08, Dr. Cagiano. Any questions about policy, teaching about drugs, alcohol, and tobacco? Okay. Thank you. And 6.09, Revision of Policy, Administering Medicine to Students. Any question from board members? Ms. Thatcher. Okay. Thank you. We appreciate that. These will be moved to action during the next meeting. Now, we move to item seven, Items for Action. They consist of quite a few. You can look up there and read them. From 7.01, Revision of School Board Policy AC, Non-Discrimination, to 7.14, Revision of School Board Policy KK, Visitors to the School. Is the will of the board to take this as a block? And if so, do I hear a motion?
Madam Chair, I make the motion that we take this selection of items for action as a block.
Second.
It has been properly moved by Dr. Woodhouse and seconded by Mr. Samuels that, under these items for action, 7.01 to 7.14, we take them as a block. Is there any discussion from board members? Hearing none, Ms. Bowles, would you please call for the vote?
Mr. Kilgore?
Aye.
Dr. Mason?
Aye.
Mr. Samuels?
Aye.
Dr. Woodhouse?
Aye.
Ms. Lefanja?
Aye.
Ms. Banks-Grey?
Aye.
Ms. Cherry?
Aye. Motion carries. Moving on to item eight, Deliberation First Read. They consist of items 8.01 through 8.09, and I believe the first one is Ms. Kason? Dr. Kason?
GBA Policy IEA. The purpose is to align with BSBA Policy IEA, which was revised in February of 2021. Second one is Policy JF, Policy Title, Students' Right to Responsibilities Handbook. Second one is policy JF, policy title, Students' Right to Responsibilities Handbook Code of Conduct, VSA policy JFC, updated to align with VSA policy JFC, revised May of 2021, and VBOE Model Guidance for Positive and Preventive Code of Student Conduct Policy and Alternative to Suspension Code of Conduct, revised February of 2021. The next one is JFCA, School Student Dress Code. And this one, the purpose of this review is to align with the student conduct, revised February of 2021, and HB 837. JFCI, Students' Drug Use and Possession, VSA policy JFCA. Purpose of this review is to align with JFC, JFC, revised May of 2021, align with VBOE Model Guidance for Positive and Preventive Code of Student Conduct Policy and Alternative to Suspension, Virginia Board of Education, January 2019, revised in February of 2021. Policy JFCJ, Firearms and Weapons on School Property, VSA policy JFCD, to align with VSA policy JFCD, revised May of 2020, and the Model Guidance for Positive and Preventive Code of Student Conduct Policy and Alternative to Suspension, VSA JFCD, revised May of 2020, and Model Guidance for Preventative and Positive School Code of Student Conduct Policy and Alternative to Suspension, Virginia Board of Education, January of 2019. Number six is ATS policy JE, Student Attendance, VSA policy JEC/JE. And this one is recommendation, recommends for deletion as the current information is contained in the policy JFC, school admissions and JED attendance policy. ATS policy KN, Sex Offender and Crimes Against Minors Registry, VSA policy KN. And this one is to align with VSA policy KN revised March of 2021. The next one is KN AJ, Relations with, I'm sorry, Relations with Law Enforcement, KN AJ, aligned with VSA policy KN AJ revised March of 2021. And the last one I have is KNA, Violent Sex Offenders on School Property, KNA, recommendation for deletion as VSA policy KNA deleted February of 2021. Contents of this policy included in revised policy KK, visitors to school, and KN, Sex Offenders and Crimes Against Minor Registry information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Dr. Kason? Any clarifying questions? Yes, Dr. Samuels.
I just want to acknowledge that I did have a concern regarding policy JFCA regarding one word, and that has been corrected. So, Dr. Kason, thank you so much for understanding my position with that particular word.
I saw that recommendation, I think you were right on point, Mr. Samuels. Thank you, Dr. Kason. I tell you, you had the whole lot of them, and you did a great job. Thank you again. Okay, moving on to item number nine, information. The next meeting of the Hampton School Board will take place on September 15th at the Rupert Sargent Building in downtown Hampton. It will begin at 6:30 p.m. Is there any information, 9.02, to come from members of the board? Yes, Ms. Banks Gray?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to remind our community that we are starting school September 7th, and we will have young people walking to school. So those of you that are those speed demons out there, just be patient with us and slow down and give them the courtesy and the respect that they deserve. And we hope we have a great school year.
Thank you. Any other information items? Tameya, anything you'd like to add? Dr. Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Ms. Banks Gray indicated, we will start school in terms of our return for the 21-22 school year on September the 7th. And I can't say enough about our staff members, certainly all of our administrators in preparing. And you saw that and witnessed that this evening with the various presentations, that we are indeed ready for a strong school opening. And so we look forward to our young people and the families that we serve to engage them on September the 7th. Many of them have already had the opportunity to participate in their back-to-school nights and evenings. And so, again, thank you, and we certainly express our appreciation to the board for your leadership as we move toward this strong school opening as well.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. I'd just like to take a couple of minutes to just share something that he does not know I'm sharing, and it actually is the back-to-school letter that the superintendent sent to all staff. I'm reading it because it's not only classy, but it's very inspiring. And I'm not going to read the whole thing, but just excerpts to show you what we have in Hampton City Schools in terms of leadership, staff, and ability. And it says, "It is my distinct honor to welcome each of you to the 21-22 school year. For all of us, the challenges of adjusting to a world impact by COVID-19 have been real on many fronts. Through it all, we have leaned on each other and connected to an inner strength. We know that our success as a school division and community is interconnected, which continues to provide a strong foundation for us. In this spirit, I want to personally thank you for your commitment to ensuring a successful school opening. We will once, will once again bring to life our mission. Together, I know we will meet the academic, social, and emotional needs of each young person we serve. While doing so, let us remember the importance of taking care of ourselves and each other. I look forward to witnessing the energy and passion of our cohesive and collaborative team as we prepare our young people to be college, career, and life-ready. Let's Go Team, hashtag, we are HCS. Sincerely, Jeff Smith." Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam.
Is there any other business to come before the board? Thank you to everybody who has made Hampton City Schools the outstanding school division it is. Thank you for your leadership, Dr. Smith, and thank you, board members, for having each other's back, and especially having the superintendent's back. With that being said, we adjourned.
Thank you.